Good evening, welcome to Athens City Council. Tonight is Monday, April 3rd, 2006. This evening's city council will be meeting in regular session. The first item on tonight's agenda is a public hearing for the Community Housing Improvement Program. Doug Stanley will be speaking to it. Doug?
Thanks, Bill. As Bill just said, this is the public hearing, in fact, the second public hearing that the City of Athens is conducting for purposes of applying to the Ohio Department of Development for funding under the Community Housing Improvement Program. The first public hearing was held, I believe, four weeks ago tonight, at which point in time the various requirements of the program, who was eligible, what kind of services were allowed, that sort of thing was covered. Since then, I have been working on an application for the city to submit to the Department of Development. The application deadline is this Friday, April 7th. The purpose of this hearing is to inform the public that the city does intend to apply for funding for the Community Housing Improvement Program in the amount of $317,000. And then, the public will certainly have an opportunity to comment on that proposed application if they wish.
How much was that again?
$317,000. Okay. By way of comparison, the current CHIP grant the city has is funded at $292,000. So it's a little bit more. Within that application are three basic activities: down payment assistance/rehab, I'll get into what these activities are, private rehab, and home repair. Down payment assistance/rehab is an activity that provides assistance to families to purchase homes. It helps with the down payment and closing costs for that family to buy a home. Then, once the home is purchased, assistance then becomes available for rehabilitation to bring the house up to certain state rehab standards. The total amount of assistance within that activity is $78,000, and that is for two units. So roughly, let's say, $39,000 per unit. And again, that includes the down payment as well as rehab services. The second activity is strictly rehab, which is for individuals who already own their home. And again, it's the rehab services that are provided would address all the major structural, mechanical, electrical, plumbing systems in the home. Again, within this grant, there are two units, two homes budgeted, at $76,000 or $38,000 per unit, which is slightly less than the down payment assistance and rehab. Then the third activity is home repair. Home repair is an activity that typically addresses one or two health or safety issues within the home: a new roof, a furnace, maybe the house needs to be replumbed, a new electrical system. Again, one or two of those items, not the entire structure of the home. Within the grant application, that activity is funded at $125,000 to undertake that work for 14 homes. $125,000 is the most that can be budgeted for that activity based on the Department of Development's guidelines. It's unfortunate, I think, because not only working with the city, but working with counties in the past, we've discovered that's typically the single activity that's in the highest demand, but you can only go up to $125,000. And 14 homes is about all you can do on that amount of money. I believe this current year, the amount, 14 homes were also included, and we were able to squeeze in a 15th, because we kept the average down a little bit. So those are the basic activities in the grant. There is also administrative funds built into this grant, so there are no administrative funds coming from the city towards the operation of this grant. The admin dollars in this grant is $38,000, which is between 11, it's over 11%, but it's below the allowable administration allowed by the state, which is 12%. Actually, you can go above 12%, but then the application starts getting hit with negatives in the review process. So the grant application meets all of the guidelines established by the state. And again, it's slightly more than the current application. And the application deadline is this Friday, and that's pretty much it. It's very similar to the current grant. Matter of fact, it's identical in terms of the number of units, it's just slightly more dollars because the ceiling on expenditures per activity has been increased over the past two years. So if there are any questions, I'll be glad to answer or try to answer them. Sure.
For instance, on the home repair. Up to 14 homes, a total of $125,000, that's what, about $9,000?
Right.
So, do you limit each application to no more than 9,000, or maybe somebody could come in with a $12,000 job?
Well, again, it's based on what's needed for the home, because, again, you can't do more than two things. If you do more than two things to the house, it's considered rehab, and then you have to do the whole house. Whether they want, maybe Uncle Leroy just rewired the home two years ago, and Uncle Leroy's an electrician and knows exactly what he's doing, and that electrical system might be good for another 50, 60 years and be perfectly safe and fine. But we might find in a rehab job, we would have to go in there, and because it doesn't meet certain standards that the state has established, we have to tear it all out and put in brand-new electrical service. That's the kind of thing you would do on a rehab. But on a home repair, that home obviously doesn't need to be rewired, so we could look at one or two other things without addressing that at all. So, if you could bring in less than that $9,000 average, then that means you can...
Maybe squeeze in another home.
Yeah, squeeze in another home, right.
Okay, so this is for the CHIP grant?
Mm-hmm.
And were we, do we have any negative marks on us so far? I mean, we're doing okay, right?
No. The first application was submitted three years ago, and it was not as ambitious as the second two had been, because we wanted to make sure that the city was successful. Because it's a bad experience that occurred in this program 13, 14 years ago. So we were successful in the first grant, and in fact, since these are two-year grants, we had done most of the work by the application round the succeeding years, so the city was able to apply again in succeeding years. And right now, with eight months, seven months to go in the grant, the current two-year grant, of the 14 home repairs, I think we've done 15. One, there, it was budgeted for two rehabs and two down payment assistance rehabs. One of the rehabs is completed, one of the down payment assistance rehabs is completed, and the other two are underway, so, were identified, so that's, there shouldn't be any problem at all. Meaning that... In fact, one of the things that we, we talked about this at the first public hearing, based on our experience this last go-around, felt like it was probably prudent that the city didn't try and do a whole lot more than what was undertaken this current round, because if you, if an application says we'll do 10 units, and you can only do six, the succeeding application is going to be downgraded and not receive the highest points in the state's review, and since this is a competitive program, it's to the city's, city's best interest certainly, to do no more than actually can be accomplished. So the, this grant, this application was prepared with that thought in mind to basically mirror the most recent one, which we were able to accomplish.
Okay. Thanks. So another question, following that idea of a competitive grant, then this is our third application? Is this as far as we can go? Is there a...
No. These things...
As long as we see the need, we could keep applying.
Right, right. There's a, two years ago when the city applied, it had an active grant, but because the vast majority of the activities in the previous one were already done, they were able to reapply again in two succeeding years. But typically, grantees wait and apply every other year. And in fact, there's a new requirement coming in place next year that a community, community can only apply every two years. So, but this will put the city in place to reapply every other year. And if, for some reason, during the next two years, we find that all of a sudden there's a higher demand for private rehab or down payment assistance and rehab, that's, you know, that's a good thing, because then we can, the city can plan to do more in the succeeding application or succeeding round.
When is the next strategy have to be put together? That's five years, is it?
Yeah. This will, this one will take us through, there's some question about whether this is year three and four, or two and three, and that's something that the state of Ohio determines.
Okay. So it is a five-year window?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so we have to start looking at one sooner or later?
Probably...
Two, three, three to four?
Either next year or the year after.
Okay.
Other questions for Mr. Stanley? Anyone from the audience wishing to ask their question? Doug, thanks a lot.
Sure.
Good luck with this.
Right.
We'll try to suspend rules, I think that's...
I believe that's going to happen later this evening.
Okay. One other item that I just became aware of from the state, because the grant application is, mirrors the current application in terms of the number of units, two, two, and 14, that required a minor revision in the city's CHIS for that planning document to bring them down to a level the city thought they could do. They've approved that, and they just notified me of that. At some point in time, I think it's coming up soon, maybe by the 1st of May, they were requesting that the city council adopt an ordinance, adopting that...
The amended...
The revision, yeah.
Okay.
That has been approved, so, that's it.
Very good.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Well, let's see, it's about 15 after, and the rules of council provide that regular sessions of council do not start until 7:30, so we will see you back here in about 15 minutes.
We're rolling. Good evening, welcome to Athens City Council. Welcome back, I should say. Tonight is Monday, April 3, 2006. It is on or about 7:30 PM. We do have a quorum with all members of council present. Under Communications, I would like to mention that I am in receipt of a letter from Glenn Matlack of Morris Avenue regarding the comprehensive plan. I think other members of council also received this, wondering where it is and who we'll be seeing and acting on it. And I think we will be hearing about this shortly, although possibly not tonight. Member Sands?
Mr. President, excuse me, I'd like to move that we approve the financial report for the month of February, which we have received from the auditor. It's in the council office on file right now.
We have a motion and second to approve the records of the auditor's office for the month of March, I believe.
February.
February, I'm sorry. Is there further discussion? All those wishing to approve?
Aye.
Those opposed? They have been approved. Reports and communications from other elected officials. Law Director Hunter.
That report, Mr. President.
Mayor Abel?
Two things to report to council tonight. One, on behalf of the Strausran Advisory Committee, we are going to be hosting a public meeting Thursday night at the Recreation Center. We've particularly invited stakeholders, people that use Strausran State Park there, but it is open also to the public, anyone wishing to attend that. And the committee is continuing to work on the resolution that council had passed. Second item I had was that we did open the bids for the interchange work at Route 56, 682 Union Street. We did have two bidders. One of them was below the engineer's estimate, so our engineering firm will review that bid, and we hope to be able to award that within the next week or so. Yes?
I don't think you mentioned the time for the meeting.
I think it's 7 o'clock.
Thank you.
If it's different, I'll give you an email. I'll have to check. Yes, oh.
How far below bid?
The engineer's estimate was 718,500, and the bid came in at 696,495. So it's 22,000 below bid. But we'll usually, in a project this size, over around the $700,000 mark, we would usually have about $70,000, 10% contingency. And then there are the engineering expenses of the onsite engineer. The total project right now is budgeted at 805,000, which is what council approved. So it looks like we will have some savings, but of course, realize that that's 80% grant funds, so we only get to save 20% of whatever is saved.
Other questions for the mayor? Thank you, Mayor Abel. City Auditor Kathy Heck?
I just have a few things I'd like to mention tonight. One is, it's time again for our annual audit. We have our audit conference with our auditors scheduled this Thursday, so that will be moving along soon, I hope. The other thing I wanted to mention has to do with our tax revenue. The income tax reports have come out for March, so that puts us at one quarter of the way through the year. And we are down again for three months in a row. So our total 2006 versus 2005, we're down about $46,000 for the year. So these reports are in the council office, but I just thought I'd point that out. That's it.
Questions for the auditor? Ordinances for third reading. Ordinance 2506, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of a pumper truck and equipment for the fire department, project number 222. Member Sands?
Mr. President, I move adoption of 02506. This ordinance authorizes the purchase of a pumper truck, not authorizes the mayor or the service safety director to advertise and accept bids. It appropriates money from the general fund, which our funds actually collected from the estate tax, which we've been allowing to accumulate within the general fund for this purpose. And once this purchase is made, it authorizes the service safety director to sell or trade in our current pumper truck.
Further discussion, member Wile?
The amount is about 400,000, and I see in my notes we expect the delivery possible by 2007, I guess, '27?
I don't think they start ordering them until we order them, do they?
It takes almost a year to put the instruction up. One of the reasons we wish to order this now is the standards change later this year, and the price will definitely go up when they change the standards. I'm hoping 400,000 is enough as it is. We'll get some bids.
Are there other comments? All those in favor of adoption of ordinance 2506?
Aye.
Those opposed? The ordinance has been adopted. Ordinance 2606, an ordinance to extend the tax abatement program for a further period of five years, until June 30, 2011. Member Phillips?
Mr. President, I move adoption of 02606.
Second.
This abatement program is in the uptown area. We discussed this at first reading. It has been in place since 1978, and is partly designed to encourage renovations and to preserve the historic nature of the downtown area. It's an abatement on the increase in value if properties participate in this particular program. So it's not a full abatement. It's relatively modest and seems to be working pretty well.
Are there further comments on ordinance 2606? All those in favor of adoption of the ordinance?
Aye.
Those opposed? The ordinance has been adopted. Ordinance is for second reading. Ordinance 2706, an ordinance amending ordinance 011405, establishing fees as required by the Athens City Code. Ordinance 2806, an ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Athens to enter into an agreement with the state of Ohio for an easement renewal for a water main on land under the jurisdiction of the Ohio Department of Mental Health and declaring an emergency. Ordinance 2906, an ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Athens to enter into easement agreements. I'm sorry?
That's ordinance 2906. Okay.
I have been alerted by the clerk that under ordinance 2806, due to some fine constraints, the council probably should consider that under suspension of council rules. Member Phillips?
Mr. President, I move that we consider 02706 under suspension of the rules.
I believe you mean 28?
Oh, I thought you said both of them.
28 and 29.
Okay. 02806, under suspension of rules. The reason for the suspension is that they are going into effect very soon. These are renewals of easement agreements that we have for utilities. The amount that we're paying for the easements is like a dollar on each of them.
Is there further discussion on suspending the rules only for ordinance 2806? Member Wile?
According to this, it starts April 15, so I guess we have to get on it.
Only if we want it to do what it says it's going to do. Other comments? All those in favor of suspending the rules on ordinance 2806?
Aye.
Those opposed? The rules have been suspended.
Mr. President, I move adoption of 02806.
Second.
We've talked about this. These are utility easements. We just need to renew them.
Are there other comments council wishes to make on ordinance 28? All those in favor of adoption of the ordinance?
Aye.
Those opposed? The ordinance has been adopted. Ordinance 2906, an ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Athens to enter into easement renewal agreements with the state of Ohio and declaring an emergency. Member Phillips?
Mr. President, I move that we consider 02906 under suspension of the rules. The reason for the suspension is that the period of the renewal begins on April 15.
Other comments on suspension of the rules only? All those in favor of suspending the rules on ordinance 29?
Aye.
Those opposed? The rules have been suspended.
Mr. President, I move adoption of 02906. Again, these are just utility easements with the state of Ohio. The cost for each of them is, for two of them is a dollar, and for the other two are $2.
Shouldn't we get the other two down?
I think the mayor has done the best he can here.
Further comments on ordinance 29? All those in favor of adoption of ordinance 2906?
Aye.
Those opposed? The ordinance has been adopted. Ordinance 3006, an ordinance authorizing the service safety director to advertise and accept bids where necessary and enter into contracts for construction of roadway, curb, sidewalk, ramps, and the vicinity of the middle school and declaring an emergency. Ordinance 3106, an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title 11, Chapter 11.05 licenses and Chapter 11.05, I'm sorry, 11.08 taxi cabs.
Mr. President?
Member Patterson?
I move to amend 3106 by substitution.
Second.
The amendment is as follows. It's under, well, I haven't got it all here. 110803C, the words excluding limousine service is crossed out from the previous, where it was. This is one of the changes. It's correct on the copy you're now looking at. The next page, under four, there was a change from, it said 50,000 and 100,000 instead of 50,000 and 150,000. And that's in two different places, under four and under B. The next one is under 0808C, and we added applicants must also have a good driving record. And under 0816 is the Fajinka addition, knowingly and recklessly, under 16. This was a recommendation of the law director, and the word "shall" was changed to "may." And that is the difference in the correct version as opposed to the version that inadvertently was introduced.
We have a motion and a second to amend ordinance 3106 by substitution. It's my understanding that a copy of this has been provided to all members of council. Is there further discussion on the motion? All those in favor of adopting the amendment as outlined?
Aye.
Those opposed? The ordinance has been amended and read for the first time. Ordinance 3206, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to submit a fiscal year 2006 Community Housing Improvement Program grant application to the Office of Housing and Community Partnerships of Ohio Department of Development and Designating Locking Athens Area Community Action Agency as the Community Housing Improvement Program Grant Contract Administrator. Member Sands?
Mr. President, I move that we consider 03206 under suspension of the rules.
Second.
The application we're talking about here is actually due to be turned in on Friday, this Friday, April 7.
Further discussion on suspension of the rules? All those in favor of suspending the rules on ordinance 3206?
Aye.
Those opposed? Rules have been suspended.
Mr. President, I move adoption of 03206.
Second.
This is an ordinance to authorize an application for this grant. This would be our third application in as many years, really. The third program that we will have run through for rehabilitation and down payment assistance of homes in the city of Athens. This will be for an amount of $317,000. The program would run through, beginning this year and into 2007. I think that's right.
All those in favor of adoption of ordinance 3206?
Aye.
Those opposed? The ordinance has been adopted. Ordinance 3306, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to submit an application and execute an emergency shelter grant agreement with the Ohio Department of Development and authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Good Works Inc. Ordinance 3606, an ordinance authorizing the filing of an application. Did I jump across the whole page there, didn't I? My apologies. Ordinance 3406, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to make application and enter into an agreement for a fiscal year 0607 Drug Abuse Resistance Education Dare Law Enforcement Grant. Ordinance 3506, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to submit an application and enter into an agreement with the Ohio Department of Development for a community development block grant for the calendar year 07, which is federal fiscal year 06. Now, the one I really want to read. Ordinance 3606, an ordinance authorizing the filing of an application with the Ohio Department of Transportation for grants through the USDOP, Federal Transit Administration, FPA, as authorized under federal transit laws, as codified 49U.S.C. Section 5311, financial assistance for other than urbanized areas and funds available from the Ohio Public Transportation Grant Program and Ohio Elderly and Disabled Transit Fair Assistance Program, and executing a contract with the Ohio Department of Transportation upon grant application approval for the period from January 1, '07 through December 31, '07. Who wrote that? I think the law director had it in for me. Are you the author of that? The federal government insisted. Okay. Okay. Ordinance is now for first reading. Ordinance 3706, an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title 9, General Regulations, Chapter 9.13, Clean Indoor Air. This is introduced by all members of council who wishes to speak to it. Member Wile?
As you can see, this is to amend our Indoor Air Act as it stands now to include hookah establishments. Section 1 amends the definitions of the Clean Air Act. That's in 13, 9/1303. And to read it, it says, "A hookah means a device used for smoking tobacco consisting of a tube connected to a container where smoke is cooled by passing through water. Hookahs are also commonly referred to as nargils, nagils, shishas, chichis, and etc., etc." We've got a bunch of them there, all the way to Hubbly Bubbly.
Oh, there.
Sorry. Obviously, it's multicultural, and my pronunciation's poor. Then it says, again, "A hookah establishment means any place public establishment that provides a permitted use of hookahs." Sections 2 talks about what is required in terms of signage. We're amending that, that the establishments, and this is coming out in 9/1304, "In hookah establishment, the owner of the restaurant shall post or cause to be posted both warning signage that must state warning. Hookah smoking causes lung cancer, heart, and other diseases and cancers. Hookah tobacco contains nicotine, and hookah smoking is not a safe alternative to cigarettes." And this signage must be visible upon entering the establishment, and it must be of a certain size that is described here. It looks like Font 26, and it also was, we added a section for the establishment to put a warning label on the menu, menu being whether it's a food menu or a tobacco menu, I believe. We had two committee meetings on this. I know that Debbie's Warfare has done a lot of work on this, helping me along, and I believe it's been reviewed by the Health Department and the law director. And that's where it stays right now. Go ahead.
The reasoning for requiring signage in these establishments is because other tobacco products, as they're sold, have labels on them about the health risks. The presentation of the tobacco in a hookah bar is without a label, so this takes the place of that labeling.
Fajinka?
Okay, I just have a couple of questions on the literal meaning of some of these things. Like, if it says, "A public establishment that provides or permits the use," so does that mean if someone, I don't know if it's possible to do this, but, you know, went into a place that allowed smoking and had a hookah with them, that would, they would have to have a warning? I don't know if this is possible even. I was just wondering about the word "permits." I can understand the word "provides," but I just wondered what permit, you know, kind of meant.
Kind of a bring-your-own-bong bar?
Right, right. Yeah, like if you brought your own into someplace, is that what is meant there?
I don't believe that's supposed to be.
Okay, well, that's what I mean. What does permits mean?
It's your ordinance.
Well, I don't know what I was saying. What does it mean?
I imagine to allow it, in terms of any type of situation. And I suspect if somebody brought a bong into a bar, they'd want to know what was being smoked exactly, so there would be some conversation going on.
Okay.
Okay, but I don't.
And they'd realize they would need the sign.
Eventually, they would, I suspect.
Yeah, okay.
If it becomes an establishment where it's regularly going on, I think so.
Okay, I have another question. It says the sign should be eight and a half by five and a half, which I figure is about that size.
I know. I was trying to print this out, too, depending on what font you use.
And it seems a little small to me.
I think it says it larger. I think from my point of view, it's an adequate size for the font. I think it depends on whether it's New York, you know, is it New Times Roman or Coriel?
No, but I just meant, so I mean, if you put a sign this size near your front door?
On your front door.
On your front door, or near it, that would be adequate. I mean, if that's what the thinking is.
I would prefer it larger, but I think this was something that was put together, discussed with other people, too.
Okay.
And part of the thing there is, I think, from my point of view, and I've gone to the present open hookah establishment, is that I think it's really to crash the myth that this stuff is safe for you. And I say that because I know that the conversation I overheard was that it was nicotine and tar-free at the time. And if it's not the case, at least somebody has, you know, if they really get bored, they can read the signage and.
Yeah, I mean, I just thought we were intending to have, the intent of the ordinance is to warn people about the health and the health dangers of it. And I just thought that that seemed like kind of a small sign. That's all.
Okay.
Other comments? Yes? Please come to the microphone.
Just for your information, this is Arial, Font 26, and this is Font 36. And this is. and this is font forty-eight.
Yeah, it's really the size of the piece of paper. I mean, if it's five and a half, which really you couldn't fit that type on practically.
Right.
Yeah. That's eight and a half by eleven, which seems like a reasonable size to me.
Right, so font twenty-six is probably what would fit on, on what is said on the, obviously, the bigger the better.
Yeah.
Other comments? Ordinance thirty-eight oh six, an ordinance to designate AceNet as project manager to solicit and administer grants on behalf of the city of Athens for the Athens Public Market Pavilion Project. Member Phillips.
Mr. President, I move that we consider oh thirty-eight oh six under suspension of the rules.
Second.
The reason for the suspension is that there are some grant deadlines approaching, and we're hoping to get some funding for this project, so we need to move in long timely to allow that to happen. I have.
Are there other comments on suspending the rules? Only. All those in favor of suspending the rules on ordinance thirty-eight?
Aye.
Those opposed, the rules have been suspended.
Thank you. Mr. President, I move to amend oh thirty-eight oh six.
Second.
The amendment is really just a slight correction in the whereas's. The third whereas. Okay. Amendment, suspend.
Yeah, I hear you.
You have to.
Amendment, suspend.
You have to suspend, or amend and then leave to suspend.
Yeah.
Okay, so we can do the amendment now and then suspend again?
Yeah.
Okay. In the third whereas, we're adding a little bit of language, we're striking the words produce and food products, so that the third whereas will now read, whereas the arts market is entering its third year in Uptown Athens, providing a venue for local artisans and contributing to the vitality and attractiveness of the city of Athens. So we just need to add a little bit of language there that refers specifically to the arts market.
Is that the only?
That's the only amendment.
Is there further discussions on the amendment as stated? All those in favor of amending ordinance thirty-eight oh six?
Aye.
Those opposed, the ordinance is amended.
Okay, now, Mr. President, I move that we consider it under suspension of the rules again, oh thirty-eight oh six.
Second.
So that grants can be applied for.
For all the reasons that were spoken to earlier, all those in favor of suspending the rules on ordinance thirty-eight oh six?
Aye.
Those opposed, the rules have been suspended. Yet one more time?
Mr. President, I move adoption of oh thirty-eight oh six.
Second.
Oh thirty-eight oh six designates AceNet as the project manager to solicit and administer grants on behalf of the city of Athens for the Athens Public Market Pavilion Project. I'd like to read the whereas's, I think, for folks who may not have this. Whereas AceNet, the city of Athens, and the Athens Farmers Market Association have identified the property at the University Mall to create a new public market that includes artisans, food vendors, and cultural activities. And whereas the Athens Farmers Market is recognized nationally as a vibrant, longstanding public market that supports our local economy and provides access to fresh, high-quality local produce and food products. And whereas the arts market is entering its third year in Uptown Athens, providing a venue for local artisans and contributing to the vitality and attractiveness of the city of Athens. And whereas AceNet has extensive expertise in developing partnerships and collaborations that strengthen the local economy in the Athens area, and has been the lead organization in the planning process for the proposed public market. Being ordained by the Council of the City of Athens, Ohio, that AceNet is hereby designated to act as project manager on behalf of the city of Athens to solicit and administer grants for planning, project management, and facility construction of the Athens Public Market Pavilion Project. It goes on to state that they, AceNet is not receiving compensation from the city, that grant authorization may be revoked, and that it will go into effect as soon as the mayor signs it. So I think this is a really exciting project. Since our committee meeting last week, a number of people have approached me, just really, really pleased that this is happening, and saying they think it's one of the best, most exciting projects they've seen moving forward in the city in recent times, and people are really glad that this is moving forward.
Other comments? All those in favor of adoption of ordinance thirty-eight oh six?
Aye.
Those opposed, the ordinance has been adopted. Congratulations, Leslie. Ordinance thirty-nine oh six, an ordinance granting a variance from the Athens City subdivision regulations for property located on Carroll Road, owned by Barney and Carroll Gruser, to allow a minor lot split. Member Phillips.
We've discussed this in committee last week. It's a fairly small variance that's been recommended to allow this lot split, and I'm digging for the papers right now. I think it's just regarding the lot size.
It's the ratio.
Oh, the ratio. Okay, thank you. Anyone else have comments?
That's my thought. Are there other comments on ordinance thirty-nine oh six? Ordinance forty oh six, an ordinance. I guess we do. I am sorry. Member Patterson.
Debbie, I just wondered, and I think we may have addressed this last week, but does each one have water separately and sewer separately? Okay, so that is already in existence.
Yeah, the width-to-duck ratio had been four to one, it was changed to be three to one. I think this is at three and a half to one in keeping with other lots in the area.
Okay. Well, I can see that, I just wondered if you.
I want you to split the lot into two lots.
Other comments? Ordinance forty oh six, an ordinance vacating a portion of Central Avenue and acquiring easements. Member Phillips.
I believe we need to consider this one under suspension, Mayor Abel.
That's my understanding.
Okay.
From the clerk.
So I move to consider oh forty oh six under suspension of the rules.
Second.
The reason for the suspension is that this is related to the repair of the Sunset Road slips, which is currently underway, and we need to be able to finish that project for the health and safety of the citizens.
Other comments? All those in favor of considering ordinance forty oh six under suspension of council rules?
Aye.
Those opposed, the ordinance has been suspended.
I move adoption of oh forty oh six.
Second.
This ordinance has been a long time, I think, within negotiation to work out the details. What it does is it vacates a portion of Central Avenue in exchange for several easements that the city needs in order to finish repairing the slips and to finish the repair of the sewer. We've been in the process of repairing the sewer that runs parallel to Columbus Road that was damaged during flooding previously. We have to run that sewer line down over an existing right-of-way, but there were some issues with an adjacent property owner. So the administration has, I believe, resolved those issues, and once this is approved, the property owner will sign over the easements that we need to repair the slip and to finish the sewer repair project.
Other comments? Member Wild.
Okay, this is mostly for the Sunset Drive area, and it's about three hundred thousand dollars worth of work. I've been, I don't think this went through the last committee, but it's been discussed before off and on in the past almost two years, I believe. This hopefully will fix the Newman Slip, unlike the other two slips on Sunset. And again, part of this agreement, just to straighten out some of the lines, traffic lines over in that area. There are unplatted roads and discrepancies within the surveys on that west end of town.
Other comments? All those in favor of adoption of ordinance forty oh six?
Aye.
Those opposed, the ordinance has been adopted. Ordinance forty-one oh six, an ordinance amending ordinance oh eighty-two oh four, establishing a P schedule for solid waste and recycling, Title V of the Athens City Code. This is introduced by all members of council. Member Wild.
I guess I am.
Bane, point of view.
Why, thank you, Nancy. This is an increase in the fees in the two-can maximum, both rentals and owner-occupied with two thirty-gallon containers. At present, it is nine fifty per month for that. It is going up to ten dollars. Everything is increased by fifty cents. Part of the reason and the thrust for this is to encumber money or generate money for litter control officer further down the line. I know there was discussion on raising it higher, and there's always that possibility that. Part of the other aspect of this is to try getting some more recycling going on in the city. Obviously, if you throw away less and recycle more, it'll cost you less. I think that covers most of it. Oh, yeah, one more thing. We did receive a communication from the, I believe, the mayor's office concerning how much this would generate. It would not generate as much as we'd like, but at the same time, about twenty-one thousand, twenty-three, twenty-two thousand, a little bit under that. At least, that's the estimate as it stands now. So, just so you know the numbers.
Member Bane.
In addition to this amount of money, and I must say that I was pushing for a dollar on each one, I was a minority, definitely on that. But having said that, the other thing is that we have the, what do you call it, remote, the scanner not working, and so although I've been up and down, I usually go down Palmer, Mill Street, Stewart Street, and I think we've been missing out on some other funding for that. And I hope once it's programmed, we'll see that money come in to the city. But since this may have a late start, it may be enough to cover it, but I would have preferred a dollar, so we can probably amend it next time.
Other comments? Member Patterson.
I wanted to point out, I know that in at least one of the press releases on this or press articles about this, it referred to it as an increase for rental units, and it, that is not the case, that it is residential as well, for two containers a week, but has left the base rate for one container a week alone at the five fifty, with the, in the spirit of if you recycle more and throw away less, that you can keep in that five fifty part of the rates.
Other comments on ordinance forty-one? Member Wild again.
Okay, and again, part of the discussion is that occurred was, should we be raising everything greater than fifty cents as the capacity goes up? The conversation I've had with, with members of the public, actually, who are very concerned about solid waste, is that we should be having more incentive, monitor incentive, throw away less. So just a fifty cent raise, from their point of view, was not, it's just a linear raise rather than an exponential raise, and they'd like to see something with a little bit more curve to the line, so to speak. And I'm aware of the fact that, you know, we will have contracts with the Athens Housing Waste District that will probably change. Costs of theirs have gone up, so we can expect changes in, you know, tipping fees, gas, you know? I mean, these are things that, you know, and of course, medical insurance covers everybody. So these are things that we have to look at in terms of what drives the villain, just so you know.
Member Bishop, did you have a minute?
Well, this is, part of the reason for this is to help fund the litter control officer, right? And I was wondering, is this, would this generate enough revenue to fund that position?
No. Member Bane?
Yeah, it depends when, when the work gets through the personnel office. It depends also, as I said, we probably need to revisit this next meeting or the meeting after that, and then revise it, because it is a problem. I think the exponential issue, I've heard before, I didn't quite have the guts, is that the word, to do it, but maybe it's time to raise it exponentially, so that a five-gallon place is five times, I mean, five thirty gallons would be five times the one gallon rate. Maybe it's time. And so, but probably not at a council meeting, maybe at the next committee meeting or the committee meeting, next time we do it.
Other comments? Member Patterson again.
Back to me again. It's always bothered me that two bags are not twice the price of one bag, and that's something we've discussed before, and perhaps while we're, while we're visiting, this is the time.
We'll do it next, look at it next time.
At the, at the committee meeting, yeah. Yeah.
Are there other comments? Ordinance forty-two oh six, an ordinance amending ordinance oh one twenty-six oh five, Exhibit A, authorizing staffing levels, and Exhibit C, non-union pay scale. Again, introduced by all members of council. Wild, would you like to speak to this?
Oh, I guess so. This is to add somebody as a litter control officer, normally not under the code jurisdiction of the code office. This is actually one of the, I've been occasionally tending the clean meetings, in particular the enforcement subcommittee. This was one of the discussions that was occurring at that point. I've also attended various neighborhood associations where they feel that they need somebody to concentrate on litter and enforcement. So this is what we're trying to do, is put something in place.
Member Bane.
Mr. President, I just think that we've tried a lot of different things. I mean, most recently, we had the Health Department contract, which was smaller recently and larger earlier. We also had a code officer that was a litter control officer earlier on. We've had, we've tried a number of different things. I tend to think of this as maybe almost an experiment. We, I feel personally that I was trying to run it, or I was advocating for an experiment with the intern position, just to find out exactly how it would work, if it could, people always say, "Oh, it could pay for itself," but I, you know, I don't necessarily think that's what we want. I think we want education, too. So I, you know, it would be wonderful if we could put this position out of business after two years. I'm not inclined to think it'll happen, but it's, I think that this is just the most recent version of experimentation that we've gone through, given our experience. That's where it is, at this point, in my opinion.
Other comments? Member Sands?
Just a quick one. Our test member Bane mentioned that this needed to pass through the office of the Personnel Director for probably some testing, civil service testing, et cetera, and therefore this slotting is really our suggestion, but that is indeed the Personnel Director's final decision.
Member Patterson?
My question has to do with how this fits in the structure of the city departments, what department would this be in? Who would the answer to?
The discussion I had with Ray Hasslett, that this would end up answering to the Service Safety Director, and it'd be in the Utilities Department.
Directly to the.
Yes. Part of the, part of the thing there is, the discussion I had with him, this is coming out of his discussion with Scott Hunter, which we presented his case as a citizen two weeks ago, was it? A full-time person, somebody who's actually going to do litter control, the discussion would also be somebody who's working on weekends. This would be a job that would actually put out there that they'd be working primarily on weekends. Some of the other things I'd like to see that he'd be addressing also, whoever, he or she, would be coordinating with the diversion program. I know I was approached by the, I think it's Mary Norwood, who wants, would like assistance in terms of supervising these people. And occasionally, as a neighborhood association member, I do supervise several students at a time, for mostly noise ordinance, they work off their four hours. But at the same time, there's many of them, and this would be, I would think, one of the aspects of the job, too. Again, the discussion was, is education as well as the ticketing part? I know I sat through one of the clean committees where I think one of the members did a calculation saying, you know, they only have to write X amount of tickets to fund the job. I forget what that number was exactly. I didn't bring the numbers, nor my calculator, but it wasn't a lot of tickets. I think at this point, we're generating very few. The emphasis of the code is, I think, the numbers I have from last January and February, we only generated about fourteen, no, eleven hundred dollars. So that's not a lot of tickets being put out there, a total of fifty-four tickets for two months. I know their emphasis, if you look at the code description of the job description for code, they have many, many other things to do. I think we need a designated person for this at this point. Whether they'll run out of things to do, there's always a possibility of changing the bar on that, too, but at the same time, I'd like to see just what we have enforced right now. We have, you know, parts of Title Nine, Title Five, and thirteen. and XIII, I think, in place for this type of stuff, and XXIX. So these are things to think about.
Other comments on ordinance 42? Ordinance 4306. An ordinance amending the 2006 appropriation. Member Sands?
Mr. President, this ordinance appropriates some funds for two different activities. The first one is approximately $20,000 to the garbage fund. We had a discussion at committee meeting last week that we would like to, as council member Wile suggested, prime the pump again with regards to the, to the recycling containers. Years ago, when those recycling containers were first available, they were given one to each unit that produced trash. Many of those units no longer have those available. We'd like to make them available at no cost, or very minimal cost. Once again, this $20,000 would buy us approximately how many?
Twenty-four hundred.
Approximately 2,400 of these containers. And they would be made available to the public for recycling activities. The second part is $2,800, $2,800 to the general fund. This would pay for some software and training for a new computer, which is being purchased by the Office of the Treasurer. The Treasurer's bond, saying that she's, is responsible for the money she handles, also is time to be upgraded. So that would be included in this $2,800. The purchase of the computer would be paid for by capital funds.
Other comments? Member Wile?
I'd also point out a conversation I had with Mayor Abel, that looking at your March spreadsheet that you got earlier, that there is not $20,000 in the garbage fund right now. So I'm requesting, and I think they're going to get together and sharpen their pencils and see exactly what we have, just so you're aware of this. Looking at the February, I'm looking at a different number, that's why. But I'm waking you aware, because I may have to table it halfway through.
It's looking that way. Other comments on ordinance 43?
There's more and more incentive to get those handhelds working, get that done.
Ordinance 44. An ordinance authorizing the adoption of an agreement with the internal order of police, Ohio Labor Council, Inc., and the city of Athens, Ohio, communication officers concerning wages and working conditions and declaring an emergency. Member Sands?
Mr. President, I move that we consider O 4406 under suspension of the rules.
Second.
This ordinance authorizes the adoption of a labor agreement with the communication officers of our police department. The, they're currently operating under an expired contract, which expired in December of 2005. To bring everything current as quickly as possible, we need to pass this now.
We have a motion on second to consider ordinance 4406 under suspension of council rules. Is there further discussion on suspension only? All those in favor of suspending the rules?
Aye.
Those opposed, the rules have been suspended.
Mr. President, I move adoption of ordinance O 4406.
Second.
Again, this is a labor agreement with the communication officers in our police department, going back to December of 2005, and it would be effective through December 8, December 6 of 2008.
Further comments? Member Wile?
Thanks for all the work, Garrett.
Other comments? All those in favor of adoption of ordinance 4406?
Aye.
Those opposed, the ordinance has been adopted. Announcements and other business? Any meetings next time? Member Bishop?
I'd like to announce that the next conversation with council will be next Monday night at 6:00. And the topic is, thanks to Carol, member Patterson, about transportation, getting from here to there, buses, bikes. And so people who are interested in the transportation issues in Athens, please come to the mayor's conference room next Monday, 6:00 p.m., an opportunity for informal discussion of the issues around transportation in the community.
Start at that end. Member Flowers?
We'll have a transportation committee meeting next week. And also, I wanted to announce that the street tour, the Athens City Street Tour, will be this Saturday at 8:00 a.m. and it'll last approximately three hours, and we're meeting in front of the city building on Saturday, this Saturday, 8:00 a.m.
Three hours. Member Patterson?
There'll be a Parks and Recreation next Monday to discuss Stroud Run.
Mr. President, finance and personnel, obviously, there was some discussion about some concerns in the garbage fund and this position we are talking about. So we, it's likely we'll have some discussion about those issues.
Okay. Other side, any?
I'd like a miscellaneous communications committee meeting.
Should she get to be first this time?
Yeah.
We can do that. Other announcements and other business? An opportunity for citizens to speak on legislative items and city services not covered on tonight's agenda. Is there anyone wishing to address council? Seeing none, and having addressed all items on our agenda, we stand adjourned.